Can you share with us your basic knowledge about the Penns Valley Area School District's academic performance recognitions, finances, and facilities?
It would be basically here to say I am not a sitting board member. I do attend some board meetings. I know we've done well on the PSSAs. We're in debt and I need to improve on both of this. We need to reduce our debt, continue the high level of education that we do provide now.
And Mr. Brock?
Yeah, I'm not a sitting board member either. This is the first position I've run forward politically. Our district actually is doing pretty well. We do carry $24 million debt. Our budget is $24 million. It was interesting to listen to the other districts and see what their budgets are. We actually do not too bad. Education-wise, from standardized testing standpoint, we do well. Our kids mostly are well above the 80% in all areas. So I think we do very well in those areas.
Again, I'm going to kind of echo what Mr. Benford and Mr. Brock have said. I'm not currently a sitting board member. Academically, I know that we are making the adequate yearly progress that we're supposed to make according to standardized testing. Economically, we carry a large debt and some of what comes up as a concern is fiscal responsibility within the district. So that's something that if elected, I will be looking at. As far as recognitions, I know that we're recognized for the progress that we make each year according to the standardized testing. And as far as the facilities, I know that there's some issues regarding facilities. We're currently in the midst of a building project, trying to figure out how to meet everybody's needs. The big question comes up, why are we $24 million in debt? And we don't have adequate facilities for things that people need like gym space and locker rooms and things of that nature.
Thank you. Mr. Evelyn?
Like Mr. Brock, I think we're doing well academically and we're testing well. But I'm at times concerned that we're becoming good test takers, but the kids are, I would like the kids to be well-prepared for real life also. And the finances, I think we're in pretty decent shape, but again, I have concerns about buildings that are going up and the cost of that on the facilities. So I know there's a new multi-use gym space going up and our locker rooms are being redone, which is all well and good, but I'm just worried about finances in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Thank you. Penns Valley currently ranks in the top 8% in the state in our PSSA testing. You know, it's a state mandate testing, but I think we do very, very well academically. We are one of the few schools that has made AYP in every subcategory in the last three years, all 17 subs-standards. When you look at our debt, we have cut debt from $30 million to $24 million in the last eight years. We were able to pay down $2 million worth of debt just a year and a half ago. Our biggest challenge is Peasers, there's no doubt about that. That's going to be the challenge of every school district in the Commonwealth. That is a major issue. And as far as our facilities, our facilities are pretty sound, very sound. I would say that our elementary schools are in excellent shape. Our high school is due for remodeling 2016. I'm hoping we can just work on some certain little projects there and keep that going without major refunding.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde?
Sure. I can't say much more than what's been said about standardized tests. One of the categories I use is how my kids are doing and what they're learning. And my daughter brought home homework the other day. She's in 4th grade where she's solving for x, things I didn't do until 8th grade. And so I'm very happy with progress there. And obviously, as Mr. Hauser mentioned, our PSSA testing has been very good. The financials, you know, I would just echo what Chris said. We do have a significant debt load that was put upon us several years ago. And this board over the past several years has done a good job to refinance that debt, pay down that debt, save us hundreds of thousands a year. So I think it's been managed pretty well. I can't really speak to the facilities question as much as maybe some others can, but my family and I have facilities we've been involved with, PE and Center Hall, and very happy with those.
Thank you. Mr. Nowinski?
Okay. As far as academic performance and recognitions, I could do whatever we also said down here. Our students are performing really, really well. We're performing at a high level even across the state. You know, our last graduating class, we had proficiency rates 24% higher on average than any of the kids in mathematics and reading in the state. So I understand that there's a lot of contention regarding teaching to the test, but we've kind of been given a mandate as far as what our kids need to accomplish with adequate yearly progress. And so we embrace that because those are the minimum standards that our kids have to meet. And our school has a high expectation of rigor. We have had teachers who have made qualified for Teacher of the Year. We actually had Teacher of the Year in the last couple months, in the last couple of years. Our finance, we are actually in a really good place financially. We have a double A-minus rating, which is a phenomenal rating. We have the best fiscal rating of any district in the county. And as far as facilities, we're investing in infrastructure and trying to make the improvements that our community and our communities deserve.
What do you believe will be the most difficult decision the board will need to make in the next five years or so?
As all the other boards have said before us, it'll be financial. With the retirement accounts in the state being the way they are with over $40 billion they're borrowing, or 40, they're borrowing nine this year to make payments. So obviously, the retirement accounts are going to be a big deal. If our economic situation does not pick up in the state, we're going to be faced with some very difficult decisions. So from my standpoint, I believe it'll be financial decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan?
I think across the board that, you know, we're going to say it's an economic, there's going to be some type of difficult decision made as far as, you know, economics, as far as a budget, and as far as, you know, I know that there's been talk of what needs to be cut, which is a scary thought because you really don't want to cut anything. You want to continue to add and improve so that you can educate the students and have them ready for the real world and give them as many leg up as you can for the real world. So I mean, what I'd like to see is a strategic plan so that we can look at what's happening in five years and what we need to anticipate. Are we going to need to make repairs? Are we going to need to make renovations? Are we going to need to look at where we need to blend programs or think outside the box and really look at saving money and how to do that?
Thank you. Mr. Evelyn?
I believe our challenge for the future is definitely financial. I think there's a lot of infrastructure changes coming and also maintaining what we have and paying for the new gym that's coming up. And on the education side, as far as I know, we're going from No Child Left Behind PSSA to PA Common Core. So I think that'll be a change and a challenge in the academic end.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Yeah, I think like I said in the last question, Peasers will be our biggest challenge. This past year, our budget increased by roughly half a million dollars. That was the same amount that the Peasers number increased by. So when you know that you have other costs like salaries and benefits and just additional costs escalating, and you also have Peasers escalating by the half a million dollars, the total growth of your budget is allowed to increase, therefore, you're always going to have cuts under that kind of system. The other major problems is some of the state and federal mandates, the testing, the No Child Left Behind, you know, all those are great challenges that are burdened on the school district. I would share that we do have run five-year financial plans on everything we do so that we know where the money is for the next five years. And we also have a five-year strategic plan for the district as far as educational program.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde?
So obviously, you sort of well documented at this point, the 40% a year increase in retirement costs, 15%, 16% a year in healthcare costs. You know, I came in here prepared to talk about what, I believe someone from the State College School District, you know, we know that's coming. What I'm really concerned about is the ability to prepare our kids to compete in a global environment in light of all those things that are happening. So we're going to have to balance those two things and make really good decisions about what's going to affect their ability to compete, to get into the good colleges, to get to good jobs, and to succeed, whatever that means for them in light of these other things. So it's going to be a tough balancing act.
Thank you. Ms. Nowinski?
The disadvantage to going last is that everybody's usually said everything you need to say before you. Okay, financial issues that we're going to be facing, obviously, retiring is the big gorilla, you know, that everybody's going to be facing. And, you know, 40% increase this past year, that could be another, anywhere from 25% or 30% increase in successive years coming. So that's going to be a large chunk of our budget that we're going to have to be able to shift around and to deal with. There is some legislation that people are looking at to actually try and alleviate that sharp spike in it. You know, as far as academics, there are going to be changes coming down through the state level as far as Common Core and some other things that we're going to need to embrace. And I just really want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all children and not just the children that, you know, are in the middle of the bell curve, but the children with special needs and disabilities and children that are gifted. I think we need to focus on that.
Thank you. And Mr. Benford?
I think everyone covered it. Financial concern is a major concern, but I think bigger than that is in due present concerns with building expansion, proposed previous building expansions. We need to regain the trust of our community, of our valley. We've got to better educate them on why these needs are changing and how we're going to meet them because I don't think, you know, the general population has a clue what the board is up against in the next five years regarding the finances and the trust and communication.
Several people question recent school construction projects such as the two new gyms that they don't feel are adequate to serve the community's needs, an $800,000 locker room project that has grown to an estimated $3 million multi-purpose room, training room, and storage complex. In your view, do these projects justify tax increases and if so, why?
That's a loaded question. There's a lot of different parts to it. Do they warrant tax increase? You know, there are a lot of building projects going on. I don't know that there was enough communication or there was enough involvement of the community in how needed or how necessary these additions were. So it's really hard to say because if the money is not there, there's going to have to be tax increases. I mean, the money isn't just going to fall from some other source. And that I know is one of the big concerns in our community is because we did not have a tax increase this year. And what does that mean going forward because of these large building projects that went from, you know, $800,000 to $3.3 million? You know, what does that mean for the taxpayer? And our taxpayers are maxed out and we really need to be able to look at that. So does it warrant it? If the money's not there, I don't know how to go around it.
Mr. Evelyn?
For the last, I've been watching the school board for the last 15 years on and off and pretty much in detail for the last two. And the reason I'm running is I was questioning some of the moves as far as the new buildings and the dual bus lines and other expenses. And so I started coming to meetings for the last two years and getting more involved. And I thought, you know, instead of getting a second and third job, I'd try to get it from the other end and try to control my tax bill from the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you. I think everyone's talking about the expansion going on outside of the front of the school. That's a three-phase project that is one, updating the locker rooms that were original to 1960. It's also adding an 80-by-80 facility onto the corner of the building that will house a cardio room and a mat room. And the mats are not dedicated for there, so they could also be baseball practice. We have undertaken this project because PE programs are changing. We no longer play kickball all the time and we can use it for lifelong skills as far as physical activity, and we think that that's very important. This was all paid for with cash and will not require a tax increase. So there are no real new gym. I like a new gym, Victoria, but I don't, we don't have a new gym. I don't see us getting a new gym in the near future, so the buildings were paid for with cash.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes, so it's, so echo what Amy said earlier, it's hard to be last on some of these questions or toward the end. So, you know, in talking with Mr. Griffith, the superintendent, this building project, at least part of it was in the five-year plan for the district to move forward with. That plan is available for the asking, as I understand it. He was certainly open with me in discussing it. And as Chris said, it was paid for with cash. Now, you know, as Joe has said, there will be operating costs, but they're fairly marginal compared to our, the benefit of having that kind of facility for our children to participate in. And while I couldn't make that school board meeting, my understanding is that the wrestling community in Penns Valley came out en masse to support that event. So, you know, we did have fairly good community support.
Ms. Nowinski?
The project that we approved this past spring was something that had been looked at for quite a while. There has been a need for a wrestling room in our district for decades. Our students have been rolling out mats in the cafeteria and picking food off of them before they actually get a chance to practice. So as far as the renovation to the bathrooms, the locker rooms, that first part of the project was budgeted about $1.6 million, not $800,000. The total bid for the locker room renovation and the addition of the cardio trainers areas, storage, which we absolutely needed, and the mat room, which can be used for all the different sports and regular PE classes during the day, was about $3 million. And we are within budget. We did not have to incur any additional debt for that project. We paid for it with cash reserves that we had and it did not cause any taxes for our community.
Mr. Benford?
I'm just concerned, it seems that we have this potential in our district to, well, we were on saying that you measure twice and cut once. You know, I've heard, yes, there's some great gains to be, to come from this addition, but people have belittled in it, the wrestling club thought it was going to be a wrestling room. They donated $25,000, which they've been working on for years, and a statement was made in a recent forum that it wasn't that much, but hell. You know, it's, this is again, communication is, it's, you know, taxes are minimal when it comes to getting people back on board and supporting administration and the school board. You know, we had, like again, measure twice, cut once. We had athletes showering in the greenhouse. You know, I think we rushed things through too quick and understand why. I can see the gains. I can see, you know, on the horizon, you know, the goals they're trying to meet, but I think we just have to slow down and measure our moves.
Excuse me. Mr. Brock?
I believe the last part of the question was, does it warrant a tax increase? One of my concerns was with it that we had savings and some of the board members were saying they'd pay the cash. The cash is tax dollars. So don't think that just because it was paid with cash, it wasn't tax money it is. The question is, is it a good thing to spend it then? We had $9 million, now we're down to $5. And I think the one question we had was our future is financial problems we're going to run into. So we spent this money and people in Penns Valley are well aware of the project. They understand the dynamics of what we're talking about here, so I wouldn't even try and explain it. But my concern was that we rushed into it because the project that was supposed to be done, the community stopped. So this was quickly undertaken and we're now many hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget with change orders on that already because it was done so quickly. So there was, you know, we did wait 50 years to get locker rooms. We could have waited one more and we could have done it right. So those are my concerns. The financial management of that, I think, was done quickly for a purpose and that's a problem.
How would you balance providing services for students with special needs versus the other children in the district?
I've heard feedback, that's one of the issues that I've heard, quite a bit of feedback from people that I've spoken to when I announced I was running. People would come up to me and say, the special needs on both ends, the special needs of the kids and the kids that were gifted were kind of being ignored or sub-doubt somewhere else. And that's one thing that definitely came up and I would like to address. I'm not sitting on the board now, so I don't, I'm privy to some information, but I've heard a lot of negative statements on that.
Mr. Hauser?
Repeat the question, please.
How would you balance providing services for students with special needs versus the other children in the district?
Yeah, so I think that we do a pretty good job with that. There are lots of needs that kids have, and I firmly believe as a board member, we need to meet all those needs, not just high-end students, middle-end students, but all students, special needs students, whatever. So if we have deficits there, I'm very honored to be hearing about it. I think we covered that pretty well. Recently, just three or four years ago, we did start a special room for some autistic children in the district. It was probably a novel, new approach that we were working on there. And to my knowledge, that's been somewhat successful, but it is a challenge and we continue to try to improve on all of our educational needs in the district. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde?
So I agree with what's been said so far. We owe it to all students to provide ample education. And it's difficult for me, from the outside looking in, to say, here's how I might balance those things, kind of not really knowing all the levers I can pull to do that as a board member and working with the administration. But I think one of the things that was done recently, and it was an opening had been created in the person handling the special education program specifically. And folks I've talked to in the district, they've been very happy with that hire. She's done a great job. So while that may not be a direct answer to the question, it's probably the best I can give, give them information that I have. And I think we're moving in the right direction there.
Ms. Nowinski?
I think that our school is trying to do the best that they can. I think there are instances where maybe some families feel like they weren't serviced the way their kids desired or they wanted. And those are issues that we're already addressing and we've been talking about in our education committee, you know, over the past year. You know, we talk about these needs. We're not oblivious to them. I think that should be really apparent to some people. And those are the things that we're focusing on in our goals this next year. You know, we're looking at teacher effectiveness, academic performance, not just for high achievers, but for everybody. Our autism room has 100% satisfaction rating. They are all good by the state and they have the best rating around.
Thank you. Mr. Benford?
The main reason I entered the race for candidate school director was because of the school district mission statement empowering our students every day to reach individual success. And that means each and every student. So I don't know how you divide out the special needs saying, you know, each, every individual, whether a special needs individual or a general population student learns it in a different way. And from my experience, you know, the main thing was inclusion because if you divide people out, put them in a separate room, that's not inclusion. You know, they're labeled, they don't learn to function in the world every day. I think inclusion, you know, the autism room sounds great, but what do those kids do when they walk out of that room? So I think, you know, we need to address every, you know, every student has a different need, whether it's autism, dyslexia, whatever. You know, everyone needs to be met. Every student needs to be taught individually.
Mr. Brock?
It's tough to answer in a minute. I happen to have a daughter that has Down syndrome and does have special needs. She did mainstream through Penns Valley all of her years, did very well. We were very pleased with what we received at Penns Valley. The issue with that is though now with No Child Left Behind, Common Core coming, financial problems that we're all talking about, it's obvious that the school districts need to be focused on meeting all the standards to get money. So there is a real concern that those that fall on the high end and the low end are going to be, going to have problems. So balancing that's going to be a problem. One of the things our district has is that a lot of kids were going to charter schools. We were losing a million dollars a year this year. It was suggested that those kids were kids that had IEPs. Well, I would think we need to talk to those people, find out exactly why they did that. Are they kids with IEPs? You know, what's going on? Are these kids that are on this end or that end? And be able to make sure that they can receive an education at Penns Valley.
Thank you. And Ms. Brennan?
I think it's hard to say about balancing. I'm going to kind of echo a little bit of what Mr. Benford said in, you know, kids across the spectrum are going to learn in different ways and we need to be meeting their needs. As educators, as the folks that are responsible for, or the district is responsible for setting them up for the real world, we need to be looking at every student, how they learn, where their shortfalls are and where they excel. It should not be a matter of saying, well, if you fall in here, this is where we're going to teach and you have to go to our level of teaching. We should be able to meet their needs. We're looking, we should be looking to not just accommodate these kids, but we should also be looking to remediate them. Many of them could come off of IEPs if we are doing the real-life skills, if we are teaching them. We need to have more open communication with the families that have these children so that we know what their needs are and it's not about they have, you know, they're being too picky. If we're not meeting their needs, then we're not doing our job. So it shouldn't be a real, it shouldn't be rapid science.
What do you think of the district's one-to-one technology initiative? And do you think it should be extended to include students at the intermediate and elementary schools?
The one-to-one initiative, I think, has been a very successful program to date. Last year, we started it in 9 through 12. We were able to implement that program with no new revenue source or no new dollars. And that's because we currently were spending 200, roughly $200,000 on technology a year and we were just able to reallocate how we use it. So the technology has been working very, very well. I know my kids have enjoyed it and it's working very well for those. And we started the 7th and 8th grade program. I do envision it going on down through the system. It probably will not be the same kind of technology. It'll probably be more age-appropriate technology, but I, we will continue to swing technology into our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde?
Yeah, I don't think there's any debate that putting technology in kids' hands is a good idea. It's not the future, it's where we are. And I didn't know because I didn't have a child of age until a few months ago that we'd done this. And I just thought it was incredible foresight to be able to do that. So I think it's a fabulous idea. I have a son in 6th grade who is sort of on the cusp of that 7th grade year and I'm not sure I put a laptop in his hands. He has a hard time keeping his Kindle in place. So there's sort of real concerns about responsibility at certain ages with technology. And so as Chris said, age-appropriate technology we need to think about, but the more we can get them using those kinds of tools, the more competitive they're going to be in the global environment. It's a no-brainer to me if we can afford it.
Ms. Nowinski? The one-to-one initiative is a fantastic idea that we've implemented. We are actually pretty progressive in this type of technology that we're putting into the hands of our 7th through 12th graders. I would like to see it come down in the 5th and 6th grade. Like I said, it might not be the laptops, it might be a different type of technology that our kids could use within school and out of school, but it's a fabulous idea. As far as elementary level, I'm not quite sure about that. There's some other things I'd rather see them implement in grade school, like more recess, but, you know, the physical activity thing, I think, is something maybe they could focus a little bit more on in the elementary levels. But the technology that we have in our classrooms is fabulous. We've got Promethian boards, we have kids using different types of technology. They write stories, they put it on the computer, they animate it, they read it, and they present it. And that's all we've done in the first grade. So the use of technology in our school district is profound and I think it's been an amazing investment that we've made.
Thank you, Mr. Benford.
I agree that there we do need to continue our pursuit of technology in the school district. I'm just concerned I hear in the infant stages, parents would like more control, like a computer shutting down at 10. I hear some people say, if you have, you know, an athletic event, we get on at 11, I have homework. I'm also concerned that we have to reinforce the socialization process. You know, if someone's staring at a screen, sending a Facebook message, you know, people need to be able to interact, communicate socially face-to-face. I just want to make sure we balance the technology and the interaction with students, teachers, administration. We just don't stare at the screen while we're at school.
Mr. Brock?
Yeah, echo the same thing. I do think we need to have a little bit more control right now. It's 24/7. So I know some school districts that shut them down 11 o'clock and only weekends. So I've heard parents kind of complain about it a little bit. But as far as technology, that's a no-brainer. You just got to do it. There's no way around that. As a matter of fact, if you investigate what Common Core, which our state has taken on, one of their goals is that all children will have a pad or a laptop, that's just the way it's going to be. I would predict even in the future, you're going to get funding to get that. And again, it will be the carrot. to get funding to get that. And again, it will be the characteristic from the state. And you'll either have it and get more money, or you won't and lose money. So, I think it's a very smart thing to do, and it is the future.
Ms. Brennan?
Can I ask for you to repeat the question?
What do you, what do you think of the district's one-to-one technology initiative? And do you think it should be extended to include students at the intermediate and elementary schools?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with everybody else that I think that the one-on-one technology initiative has been fantastic. All of my kids have been fortunate enough that they were all able, as of this year, to take part in it. It's been a real help. Homework is forgotten. A lot of the textbooks even are online, so it's really great that the excuse of, oh, I left that book in school, is no longer an excuse, because they definitely have their laptops with them. It also ties in really well with the exceptional children that we've been talking about, whether, regardless as to what end of the spectrum they're on, because there's lots of great applications out there to help, whether it's autistic children, children with learning disabilities, and gifted children. So, I think it's really great on that level. As far as expanding it, I, my understanding was that we would be looking at expanding it into the intermediate level in the next couple of years, is what I thought they originally told us. And the elementary level, again, you're going to have to look at what's age-appropriate for that.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Ebling?
I love the idea of technology. I think it's a good idea. I like the, you know, the example is like the iBook and the Kindle. You can get books on your Kindle, and you can touch a word and get the definition right there, whereas like in the old days, you had to get your dictionary out to see what the definition of a word was. But now, technology like that can help you learn so much faster. The only drawback I think of is like what Mark said. It's like, I would set time limits for technology, so kids don't forget how to interact in person.
In this audience member's view, recent board appointments were only RCC supporters. If elected, what process would you use to make appointments, and what steps would you take to make all the decisions transparent?
That's a good question. So, if elected, I mean, I, you know, frankly, don't completely understand the appointment process. I've asked some questions lately about that, in terms of the openness of the interviews and things like that. And I've read the policy. And so, when the call goes out, and then those things are vetted, you know, the all, that's where I'm looking for, vetting deliberations board, I'm looking for about that. It happens in public. And so, I think what I would do is go in with an open mind. RCC's behind us, and so hopefully that isn't an issue anymore, but certainly the issue of openness and transparency. You know, ask all those questions in a public forum, just like this. Allow people to answer on a public forum, deliberate on public forums, so that everything is transparent. There's communication throughout.
Thank you. Ms. Nowinski?
I think that question is actually directed at me. I was appointed by the board last December. I applied for the position, and I interviewed the position along with some other people in this room. I was chosen based upon my experience and my education, and my ability to answer questions relevant to our school district. It had nothing to do with my involvement with the RAM Center, or my, what people like to accuse. There was actually people in this audience tonight that were present during my interview, and I think if they were honest enough, they would also probably agree with that, instead of trying to berate me over being appointed for a really silly reason. The RCC is no longer relevant, and I think we really need to focus on what's pertinent in our school district right now. As far as transparency, our board meetings are open. The day that I interviewed, that board meeting was open. People were welcome to come and to hear what I have to say, and to see my credentials and my experience. And that's all I have to say.
That is a difficult question. I wasn't involved in any of the interviews, didn't participate, or wasn't interviewed for a position. I just think that we should learn a lesson from the RCC event, that, you know, we have to be more open, be more public, communicate more, perhaps have a, maybe we should move to a forum with the candidates, and they sit by side, side by side, and ask, you know, answer questions at the same time. You know, I don't know. It could be a hard decision. I really don't know if there is a quick solution. And I don't think it should be done in one day. I don't think you can interview in one day, you know, a bunch of people in one day, and maul over all the information, and make a decision in one sitting. So, I think maybe extend the process.
Thank you. Mr. Brock?
If I was on the board, I certainly would never pick a candidate on the same issue. You just can't do that. Not good practice. As far as transparency goes, there are things we could do. I mean, it's one of the reasons I'm actually running for a board member, is because of that fact. I spent two years trying to find out what's going on in our school district. And seeing how school boards run, and the desire for a community to be involved is a very tricky situation to do, but I think there are things that we can do. I would love to have our board meetings more than just open. It's not a spectator sport. As it is now, that's what it is. The community needs to be involved. They need to be able to question boards when they are actually a board, not board members. And they need to be able to get straight answers. And I would be moving towards that direction for our district.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, after a few people answer, when there's this many candidates sitting up here, it does get difficult, because I feel like we're just rehashing the same things. I think one of the things that would help is definitely having a variety of people on the board, that there are not just like-minded people. I think that that is unfortunately, not that the individuals on our board are not great people, and they have stepped up to the plate to do a job that is, can be somewhat thankless. Unfortunately, I think that because they've spent so much time together, there is kind of a group think that goes on. And although that makes passing decisions and policy really easy, it can also be hampering in the fact that there's never any kind of discussion about what's the other side of this, somebody playing devil's advocate. I think having transparency with the technology we have, there's no reason that they could not, meetings cannot be videotaped, and aired online, posted online, and having the community involvement, as Mr. Brock said, with question and answer.
Thank you. Mr. Ebling?
I interviewed for a position on the school board. I didn't get it, and I'm running to kind of give the people a choice. If they want me or not, they can vote on November 5th and let me know, I guess. But as far as the transparency goes, the board, as far as I know, can make its own policy to take questions when they want to. And they can allow people to speak more often. And I've heard people say, well, you know, the meetings might go till midnight. And I say, well, that's fine, but we can set time limits of five minutes per person if we have to, but we can allow each person to speak, whether it's for two minutes or two hours, they get a voice.
You and Mr. Hauser?
When potential folks interview for a board position, it is a pretty rigorous process. They are, fill out an application. We are court-mandated to have that position filled within 30 days after resignation. So, they fill out an application, they come in, and they sit in front of the board and other members of the public, because they are open, they are interviewed, and much like we are here tonight. And what I choose on is experience, education, but I also like to look to make sure, I prefer board members to have kids in the district. Right or wrong, I think it's important to have a better understanding of what goes on in the district when your kids are involved. Back to the transparency thing, our meetings are open to the public. I encourage the public to attend. We do have sunshine laws. Those sunlit laws has always been a big. I did suggest recently, and I do fully expect to be implemented, that we will have videotaped online board meetings in the near future. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amy Nowinski. Although I've lived in Aaron'sburg for 12 years, I'm running for position of school board in Region 3, which is Melheim Borough, Hanks Township, and Penn Township. I believe the quality of education that our children receive is vital to their future success. We have three children in Penn Valley Elementary Intermediate School, and I enjoy volunteering in their classrooms and working directly with the students and the teachers. I'm an advocate for early childhood reading, and I serve in both the Center County Library Board of Trustees, and the Friends of the East Penn Valley Library Board, and I'm currently a preschool teacher in Center Hall, assistant preschool teacher in Center Hall. While I think Penn Valley has the best academic and learning environment of all schools in Center County, I know that nothing is perfect, and there are changes that can be made. And those are the things that we have been focusing on since I came on board last December, particularly in our education committee meetings, and then the goals that we set as a board for the district. We set goals that our administration has to achieve every year. And those goals that we've set this year are, one, communication, teacher effectiveness, academic performance, and safety and security. I'm running principal director for several reasons, but my primary concern is that the current standard of academic excellence be maintained and improved upon for all students. I believe my experience collaborating with academic and government agencies, and my willingness to respectfully civilly work with people will be beneficial in evaluating the decisions our district makes, or our board makes for our district. And I'm really encouraged by the progress that we've made in the last five years, and I just want to make sure that that is the trend that we have in the future. As a school director, it's an extremely important job, and I am committed to being an effective member of our board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayne?
Sure. First, thanks to League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting this forum. I chose to run for school board for three reasons. First, it provides a great opportunity to positively influence our children and our whole community. Second, I can point to people in my life who invested their time and energy in me to help me achieve my goals, and I view this as another chance to pay back what they've given to me. Third, my background has prepared me to make a positive contribution to the board. I've taught managerial decision-making to farm and food business owners for 13 years as a professor of agricultural economics here at Penn State. I now directly manage a team of 25 staff with a $2 million budget. This has prepared me well for the board, has underscored the importance of development and cultivating healthy relationships. All the talk in this election about communication and transparency speaks of the need for a relationship with the community. I value relationships that allow you and me to be open and honest, yet professional and respectful with each other. From the start of my campaign, I've welcomed your questions and feedback. Many in Penn Valley have taken me up on that offer, just as they have tonight. The rest of you have an open invitation to do the same thing. I want to thank the hundreds of folks who've supported me in various ways over the past few months. I want to especially thank Mr. Ebling for running a positive campaign. Very much appreciate it. Finally, I thank my Penn Valley neighbors for taking time to learn about me. I've worked really hard to inform you about myself, to earn your vote, and to hit the ground running should I win this election. I appreciate your consideration. If you need more information about me, you can visit my website, hi.pvasd.com, or just contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and CNET also for hosting this event. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to meet with my opponents and fellow Penn Valley citizens. When I started on the school board eight years ago, we had the highest taxes in Center County, and had best academic, had best average academic performance at the high school. Today, we have very high academic achievement, and the lowest household tax burden in the county. We have great schools and low taxes. We have cut debt from $30 million to $24 million. We have built a biomass facility that's currently saving us over $200,000 a year. If elected, I have four major goals for the school district: to maintain academic excellence, to better engage parents with the school district, to improve communication with the community, and maintain low taxes. I have demanded excellence at every level of education here at Penn Valley. We must insist that every student learn the old basis as well as the new basics, so that we can be competitive in their future endeavors. You will find that I am committed and dedicated to Penn Valley, its Board of Education, the taxpayers, while we enable our students to meet their mission of reaching individual success every day. I am most proud of Penn Valley. We have great schools and low taxes. Please vote on November 5th, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ebling?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum tonight. I'm Joe Ebling. I'm running for Penn Valley School Board at large, two-year term. And I believe all relationships are collaborations, or should be. Two years ago, the Penn Valley School Board was not like this. People that came to the meetings were not heard. The other night, I was reading about ancient Greece, and back in the 5th century B.C., they invented something called democracy. Back then, the voting members not only were allowed to be involved, they were expected to be involved. I'd like to see more collaboration between the public and the Penn Valley School Board, if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan?
I again want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight, and everybody in the community who came out. My name is Victoria Brennan, and I'd like your vote on November 5th for the position of school board director in Region 3. Going into this endeavor, I stand for transparency, integrity, open communication, and accountability. I am not a politician. I'm a community member. I want to represent you. My most recent professional experience was as the director of a county-wide program offering free family counseling to families with troubled teens for a nonprofit organization. Working in this capacity taught me about fundraising and budgets. I learned my way around a federal grant proposal, and it also solidified my beliefs that all children need and deserve opportunities to excel. I want the focus to be on students reaching their full potential by whatever means, whether it's academics, athletics, vocational training, or fine arts. They are smart and deserve every advantage we can give them. I want to promote a strategic long-term plan for the district, anticipating and evaluating the goals. Where does the district see itself going in the next five years? What about 10 or 20 years? Planning for this will assist in bringing about fiscal responsibility as well. I want the community to be involved and have a voice. 17 years in the counseling field has given me exceptional listening skills. Whether I agree with you, whether I believe you, whether I like you, it doesn't matter. I'm going to listen. I'm here for you as your representative. We're the stewards for the future of our students. There is no room for personal agendas.
Thank you. And Mr. Brock?
Again, thank you, CNET, and thank you to the league. I'm running for school board, and I just went Penn Valley. No, I'm not running because I have an agenda. I have no agenda about education, athletics, finances, any of those things. What happened was I got involved because of one issue. That's true. I've spent two years now listening, and watching, and seeing what's going on with our school board. And that issue pointed out to me that there was a leadership problem in our district. The community is well aware of what they tried to do, and what wasn't heard, how much they wanted to be heard. And from that experience, I decided I wanted to run and be a part of bringing the community to the board. I don't want to bring myself to, or an agenda to. And I think we do well at education. We're doing great financially. We're doing well in technology. We're just good in many ways. What we lack is a board that is truly, has the community on their side, and involved in our district, and they need to be. Because we said earlier, our future with financial issues we're going to run into, Common Core again, please, Penn Valley, take a look at Common Core, standardized testing, we're going to run into some issues in our valley that need to be solved, and we need to do it together. What I've seen is that with our present board, people are divided and angry. And I think that needs to be fixed, and part of that might have to be that the board has to be changed. And what I want to be is part of the leadership to control that, the community to the board, make them a part of the board's decision-making process, and help us work through those issues in the future.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Benford?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the league and CNET also. And I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for being here and having interest in the board and Penn Valley. And I just, we all know Penn Valley's heritage is rich, you know. I want people to come to Penn Valley because of what we are and who we are, not for what we can become, or what they want to make us. You know, like I said before, I started just because our mission states that we are empowering our students every day to reach individual success. I just have concerns it has to be for each and every student. I don't know how we're going to do it. It's a tight road. We're doing, like you said, we're doing good with technology. You know, money's going to be a problem. The focus has to be on the student. And I think to best do that, we have an monumental task of developing trust again in the community, communicating with them, and getting them on board, because the history of Penn Valley is strong. So, I would just like to ask, whatever your preference is, vote, make your voice heard. This is your opportunity. You know, speak now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please start me in thanking all the candidates for...